Good evening.
Nice to see a full house here of smiling faces. I'd like to call the February 27, 2024 Milledgeville City Council Meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Would you please stand and join me in prayer, ladies and gentlemen? Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this beautiful weather that we've had. We ask that you once again look over us and help guide us as we make decisions for this city. We ask that you protect us, protect the citizens of this city and this county and this state. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to public comment, I just wanted to make a comment, and that is that day after tomorrow is something that only happens every four years, and that's the 29th of February. I had a first cousin that was born on the 29th of February, and so he only had a real birthday every four years. And he would decide whether he wanted to have it on the 28th or just wait till March the 1st and have it. And I remember several years back, he told me that he was actually 11. If you do the math, you'll know that he was actually 44. And I asked him how an 11-year-old had been divorced twice. He didn't want to comment about that, but I just wanted to take a moment to point that out. We have our public comment, and we have two speakers that have, I think I got two, if I'm correct, go. And first is Ms. Cynthia Ward Edwards, and if you would, please come up to the podium.
I think I need that birthday. Mayor and council, and I understand that she's on the, she's here.
Yes.
Good evening. On behalf of NAACP, we would like to thank each of you for approving the banners placed during Black History Month, recognizing black leaders that have been historically overlooked. Consequently, I would like to address Ms. Walden for her comments and views regarding the opposition of displaying the banners and the insensitive statement you, Ms. Walden, made about black pioneers in Milledgeville, Baldwin County that were not in favor of the project because it was for recognition of black people. Ms. Walden, your district consists of a major number of black constituents that felt slighted by your remarks that you were not in favor of the project honoring black leaders during Black History Month. In the past, black leaders were never acknowledged for their accomplishments, and just by looking around the city and county, it's obvious that the majority of the names are glorified by another race. We have children that need to look up to African-Americans as role models. We cannot find a role model in the Confederate statue that sits in the square of a public library in Georgia Military College. In your statement, you spoke of fairness, but you failed to address the unfairness that figured so promptly in the past. We want to let you know and anyone else that feels that we, we want to let everybody know that we're still woke. We're still here, Ms. Walden. The sentiments expressed by you are deeply troubling and run counter to the principles of equality, diversity, and inclusion to our society. Your remarks sense a harmful message to the community, particularly to our African-American communities. We take solace in knowing that your time and the way you think is just about over. There's expiration date on everything. Thank you.
Hold on just a moment. You are?
My name is Clarence Hall. She yielded her time. Suzie.
Okay, would you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Clarence Hall, 136 Lake Creek, Milledgeville, Georgia.
Thank you very much. Yeah, because I have, I'm going by what I have here.
No problem, man. I appreciate it. Thank y'all for having me. I echo them with Madam President State earlier, and we are amused, not amazed, about the statement that was stated, quoted in the paper. I quote that the banner does not represent everyone, and we've been having to deal with the Confederate statue that does not represent everyone either. I mean, so here we are again. Understand what's in your mind, get to your heart, come out your mouth. There are consequences for what you say. Everybody can practice their First Amendment, freedom of speech. Mr. Hall finally got a statement right in the newspaper, the freedom of the press. And we have the freedom to redress in the government, so that's why we're here. And we know, and we're not the turn of the cheek group. I know we used to have them in the past, but we're not their group. So like Madam President stated, that it's an expiration date on me, everyone in this room. You know, and so I was looking in the refrigerator the other day, and I had some milk that was outdated. Tried to get rid of it. So that thinking is outdated.
There was a minute left on the time that she yielded.
Well, but this is where we are with the minute. It don't take long. That's why we're here, to address the statement that was stated in the paper. And again, like you say, that we're not going no place. We're here, and we got to keep moving. And whatever it takes, we're not just here to address this anyone, because that should offend everyone that looked like me on the board. It should have, because keep in mind, one for oppression, one for progression.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, man.
Now, was he speaking for?
I understood him to say that he was taking the time that Ms. Edwards had yielded.
No, he said he was speaking.
He's speaking for Ms. Marshall. Is that correct? Okay, okay.
He was taking her place.
Thank you. Okay. You have all received a copy of the February 13, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So move.
Send.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Uh.
Ms. Walden?
Uh.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay, the February 13 council meeting minutes are official. The mayor is not with us this evening, but she is with us by phone, I do believe, and this is the portion of the meeting that we have mayor's comments. It's the mayor with us.
Yes, good evening, everyone. We thought this way would be much more smoother, having Mr. Chambers just open up and then I just jump into my mayor's comments. I really don't have a lot of comments tonight. Curious to know, have you all gotten mayor pro temp together, pushing march? Have we gotten that together yet, council? Have we ready to go ahead and name that person tonight?
If I raise a motion, we can move to make a nomination for tonight.
What say ye? What did they say, Mr. Chambers?
I believe Ms. Map said she was going to make a nomination tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we'll need to do, I believe, is probably add it to the agenda, at the end of the agenda, Madam Mayor. But evidently, we are ready.
Go ahead and carry that out, Mr. Chambers, if you all are ready.
We'll amend the agenda at the end of the meeting to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. That's why I told him to go ahead and carry it out, as we need to do to amend the agenda.
I think that will come at the end of the agenda as it currently stands, Mayor, not right now.
Once we get into our business, end of the meeting.
Okay, go ahead. I see you don't have it listed, but go ahead. We'll amend it at the end.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments, Mayor?
That's about it. What I have to comment on tonight, as I shared with you earlier, Mr., I think I have a couple of comments once you get into breaking down, one, get into the ordinance, and something on your manager's report. I had a question about, but I'll wait till you get into that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We don't have any presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to the city manager's report, and I'll ask Mr. Griffith to go ahead with his report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. This one may be a little bit long tonight, but I'll try to get through it and answer any questions that you all have. Ordinance O-2402-06 is the first reading of an ordinance to make budget amendments. This is the budget amendments that are typically made as we true-up the fiscal year. In this situation, it would be the previous fiscal year, which ended last June 30, but is currently being audited. These are the true-up figures that came from the audit in terms of making adjustments to the line items that were in the budget at the close-out time when some debits and credits were needed to be made. This is what we do annually. Obviously, the line items and the numbers change, but it's the process that we always go through. I'll answer any questions that you have on that, but I would ask that the rules be suspended and voted on with the first read tonight, if possible, so that we can move forward with our audit. We have gotten an extension from DCA on audit simply because more and more cities are having difficulty finding companies to do audits. Municipal audits just are not being done anymore, and we obviously have one that does, and they are picking up more and more business. And I think DCA probably at some point in time may look at allowing the audit to be provided within 12 months of the end of the fiscal year as opposed to six, but we have gotten an extension on that, as a number of other cities have. And this is kind of the last piece in that before our auditing firm can finish up that audit. Ordinance O-2402-07 is the first reading of the ordinance that adds Chapter 59 to the Milledgeville Code of Ordinance for the Purpose of Governing Public Art. You all remember, this was the ordinance that was brought to us by the Political Science 4401 class, public policymaking from last fall, that Dr. Max Harlemann's class brought to us. I think it's an excellent ordinance. It covers things that needed to be covered with the public arts piece of things. I personally have a little concern with it in terms of the Section 59-38, where it talks about compliance with other laws, rules, and regulations. Some of that could be read to be construed as that the Public Arts Board would have the same powers to approve a certificate of appropriateness as the Historic Preservation Commission. I would like to hear your opinion on that. My recommendation is to allow myself and the city attorney's office to work through that, to include an additional paragraph in there to where, once the Public Arts Board makes an initial approval of an installation, that that then comes before HPC for a certificate of appropriateness, as they currently do now. I think it's important, if anything is happening in the historic district, that HPC remains in that process. I don't anticipate that there would be any issues with HPC with those installations, but I think it's just important from a legality standpoint and from a process standpoint to make sure that HPC issues a certificate of appropriate on those installations. I don't anticipate it will delay it any, but if it does, it typically will be less than 30 days. And so that's my recommendation to you all, and just wondered if any of you had any comments about that or any other comments about any parts of the ordinance.
I had a star by that because I really didn't understand it. The preference was too vague.
I'm in agreement.
Okay.
I just, we've set a precedent for over four decades now with HPC. And I don't want things being done that they're not, at least have some oversight.
Well, since this is the first read, since it's okay with you all, I'll get with the city attorney's office, and we'll craft something, and we'll send it out to you, an email prior to the next council meeting, to let you know where it would be inserted and what the insertion would be. And we can cover that discussion during the second read in two weeks for hopefully ultimate approval at that point in time.
Also, what type of recourse? I would assume it would be anything that someone that doesn't receive that certificate of appropriateness would be able to go through. And I think that should come before council, I believe.
Right.
That's correct.
Right. And also, too, just when I read it and realized that there were some things that would conflict with historic preservation, I was just curious to know, have they been provided a copy of this?
They have not, but we will definitely do that before the vote.
Because I think that we need their oversight. So that's why when you said present it back in two weeks, I'm like, perhaps, you know, if that's enough time, perhaps we need to make sure that we have them or, you know, able to sit down and go through it as well, and to make sure that we can stay within their guidelines.
I will, I had not thought about doing that. That's a great thought and great idea, and we will do that. Probably will wait until after we look at the insertion language before we send it to them, just so that they know that they are in the mix already. And then if anyone has any changes or suggestions after that point in time from HPC, I can let y'all know what those are.
And that's giving them respect for the position that we hold, as far as the historic district is concerned.
So we'll do that, and unless something happens, we'll bring it back in the second read in the first meeting in March for a vote at that point in time. Ordinance O-2402-08, as I mentioned in my bi-weekly report to you all, the last week, obviously getting IT involved in the crime-fighting world is becoming more and more important, if not, I think I actually used the word paramount, in being able to solve those crimes. And I think it speaks volumes that our police chief and his department are looking ahead and asking to create a position of lieutenant for IT forensics. This would not be a new position. There would be a position removed from the detective's number and take them to five from six, and then this lieutenant position would be created. And some of the detectives would actually be working with IT forensics, but this lieutenant would be responsible for that department. And based on the fact that the position is a lieutenant, they will still be reporting to the director of detectives and the major that's in that position. So I went down to the police department not long ago, and they are already about this deep in IT forensics, and they really need somebody to help them coordinate that, and it's getting more and more important. We had an unfortunate situation in Athens last week, and if you've been following anything with that story, you know that IT and security cameras and those kinds of things were the initial piece of evidence that they had in order to be able to catch that suspect as quickly as they did. So I think this is an important piece, and I appreciate Chief Swigert bringing the request to us. I included in my report the position announcement for you all. And when we get to the point that you're asking questions, I'll be happy to cover any questions that you have on that. I would also ask, if possible, that the rules be suspended and this one be voted on tonight as well. Resolution, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I was trying to catch it, because if we're going to suspend the rules, and I have a question, and my only concern was budget-wise, HR-wise, finance-wise, on the salary. I know how IT is, and that could end up being more than the chief's if you leave it that open.
Well, we would start with step A of that pay scale.
And that's what I just thought, that maybe there needed to be something stated.
Right.
So that we would have a reference point and not leave that.
And I believe the actual ordinance states that it gives you the pay scale. And I can assure you that when any negotiations for that position start, they will start at step A, so. Y'all know you're city manager.
I wasn't so much focused on the step as the actual.
Scale, the grade, and it will be the grade that all other lieutenants are on.
Okay, okay. That's what I want to be clear with.
Any other questions about that ordinance? All right, Resolution 2402-10. This is a resolution to authorize an agreement with Turnip Seed Engineers to do an additional part of the whole lead and copper service line inventory piece. That is that, I used to call it an unfunded federal mandate. I can't do that anymore because the GFA loan that you all authorized about two meetings ago is actually coming from Federal Clean Water Act money, so I can't say that it's an unfunded mandate anymore. But if you all remember, you approved a councilable GFA loan of $426,750, and part of that money will be used to fund the $189,960 of this contract. There still is some question up in the air about if we're going to have to replace between the meter and the house, depending on which week you read the information that's coming from Washington. Some weeks you have to, some weeks you don't. But this, along with the 120 water contract that you all approved last summer and that they're working on now, basically, this will be the testing process where all houses built prior to 1990 are tested for lead and pipes in terms of the delivery system to the house. If we do have to replace the line between the meter and the house, we will only go to the house. The federal funds do not allow, nor do I think we need to get into the permissions necessary to replace piping in someone's house, since that's not what the federal guidelines are requiring. But we may very well have to go up to the house, and so we will see how that pans out. You know, this is such a huge thing. I personally think it's going to change three or four different times before it gets to the point where we are actually having to replace some piping. I know Ms. Shinholster said that she heard some things in NLC. It looks like maybe they're working hard as an advocate to possibly not have to replace the line between the meter and the house. So it's kind of a moving target, but I'm appreciative of the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority giving us the councilable loan that they have and having the funds that we need in order to do this Phase One and Phase Two of the inventories for the lines that Turnip Seed will be working on for us. By the way, they were very instrumental in putting the paperwork together for us to get the GFA loans to start with, so they've already been working on this project, and they know it well. I just, I continue to read and wonder what some of the really smaller cities are going to do, because I just, it's, I don't think the feds have thought about the impact of all of that. But, you know, that may change, as I said, two or three different times before it gets to the point that we're actually replacing pipes. Resolution 2402-11 is actually a two-pronged agreement with Simonton Engineering. If you remember, you all authorized a contract with Atlas Structures to install channelized islands on Blandy Road at Lakeview Primary and Midway Hills Primary Schools. This contract with Simonton would have them serving as the project guides and project leads on this project to make sure the installation is the way it should be, based on the engineered documents. Also, at the same meeting two weeks ago, you all approved or authorized a contract with Peach State Construction to do a little over $2 million worth of stormwater infrastructure replacement and repairs. This contract would also engage Simonton to serve as the administration on those projects. The fee layout might be a little bit confusing, so let me share a little bit of information with you about that. The documents, excuse me, the contracts that were used for the engineering and planning of both of these projects still had a little over $20,000 left on that project cost that was not used in the engineering of those. So when we went back to Simonton to talk to them about administering these two projects, he put together the proposal that you have in your packet tonight that shows a total of $60,500, but then that $20,100 pulled off of that figure that was left over from the original contract, making the contract addition, as he's got it worded, $40,400 here. So this is, as I said to you all two weeks ago in my report, this stormwater deal is a big, and I think it's important for us to have the folks who engineered it to start with administer the project and make sure things are being installed as they should be. We will have to do some lead work on it specifically for one area where there is a wetland in the neighborhood where we're working, and some of our work may push some more water that way, and we're having to work with, or identify first, and then work with an HOA to possibly get access to that area to be able to do some clean out so that it can handle the water that may go there. But I'll keep you informed on those projects, as my understanding from you all, based on my last performance evaluation, these are the kind of projects that y'all would like kind of road maps on and signposts on to let you know how things are going. And once they get started, then I will certainly make sure that you all have that information. Resolution R-2402-12. As you all know, we have had some recent motor vehicle collisions that have been pretty serious at the North Jefferson-Dunlap Road intersection. We did some initial research on some things that we might be able to do there in terms of trying to control that intersection a little bit better. of trying to control that intersection a little bit better. It appeared that probably one of the easiest to do was to just simply reduce the speed limit, at least between Log Cabin and Dunlap, but that is a street that we run radar and LIDAR on for speed control. So therefore, that speed limit decrease has to be approved by GDOT and added to our radar list. And that's, that's a little more in-depth than just sending GDOT a letter and saying, will you please reduce it to 45 or whatever, whatever it should be reduced to based on what the data shows. But the contract that's being authorized by this resolution will have Simonton doing everything that's necessary to apply for the speed limit reduction on North Jefferson Street. I've actually, Paul is here and we're actually looking all the way down to Lakeview on North Jefferson, quite frankly, in terms of some data that we'll put together. We have a relatively new speed trailer from, at the PD and we'll be able to utilize that to get him some of the data that he needs. But in addition to that, he has shared with me that the engineering and cost of installation of a intersection controlled by roundabout as opposed to a stoplight can be much less in cost. So with, along with this proposal, he's gonna do some initial and preliminary engineering on the possibility of installing a roundabout at that intersection. He'll put together some exhibit for, exhibits for us and my plan is to then use that information for us to go and complete some grant requests from GDOT, who I understand has lots of money for roundabouts all over the state. And if, if it ends up, that's what we need to do, and if it ends up that you all agree that that's what we need to do, then we will work towards trying to get some funding in order to, in order to do that. This is moving a little bit faster than I thought it might, so that's, that's exciting for me. And I just happened to ask Paul the right question one day and he, he shared with me that information about the roundabout and, and then got us this contract, I, I think the very next day after he and I had that conversation. Paul, you wanna add anything to that that, that I missed in terms of especially what you'll be doing on Jefferson and Dunlap?
Well, I think that if, if, you know, we'll go through and do the traffic counts and we'll see what moves the traffic the best there. One of the things we do is we actually animate the traffic too there based on feature projections and it's, it's pretty interesting when you put it on the screen, you can see things move better. That'd be part of what we're doing, so that we can come up with that. So you know, and we go through a financial analysis and right away and all those things we do that. What we'll probably do is just do some draft stuff and come in and, and work with, with City Hank and his group and try to come up with that final work.
Thanks.
I have one question. Would there be signs or something warning people that?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, a roundabout? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll start about Lakeview.
They'll be slowing down to about 15 miles an hour, I hope.
On the strip, usually they.
If, if that works out, that's a great, I think, I've, I've been through that intersection a lot on purpose lately, just looking at some stuff. And you know, the, the grades coming down Dunlap is pretty, pretty soon coming down.
Yeah.
And if you put the traffic light there and people have to brake, that's a whole lot different than if they just have to slow down and make it into traffic.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the great part, if we want to call it.
Make everything work, yeah. My concern as much is northbound traffic coming over the top of the hill toward the Dunlap and if there's a light there and it's turning yellow, what's the speed gonna be when they go up under it? So you know, that, that's why I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that traffic light. I think, I think the roundabout is, if we can make it work, that'd be.
Good. Thanks, Paul.
That'd be great.
Sure.
That's up to the chairman.
Not during this portion. You can come up after the meeting, if you will. Okay, thank you.
Also, you, you were notified with my report and with the information that was in your meeting book that all five of the current Main Street DDA board members have requested that they be reappointed and that is on the agenda tonight. And while we're talking about appointments, let me remind you that we need to make one appointment on the Planning Commission and two appointments on the Historic Preservation Commission. If you all remember, the Chair of the Planning Commission is an at-large appointment and that was Mr. David Grant, who passed away earlier this year. Mr. Donald Hill, who represents District Three currently on the Planning Commission, is the Vice Chair and he chaired the meeting on February 5th. But we will need to look at appointing someone to fill the Chair position by either moving Mr. Hill to the Chair position, if that's your, if that's your pleasure, and then getting someone else on, to represent District Three, or moving any other member currently that's there to the chairmanship and then getting someone to fill their position. Just to remind you, District One is represented by Herman Driscoll, District Two is represented by John Alton, District Three is represented by Donald Hill, District Four is represented by Emily Cook, District Five is represented, represented by Kimberly Simmons and District Four, excuse me, District Six is represented by Mackenzie Davenport. So please be thinking about that. They still have a quorum, even with the Vice Chairman running the meetings, but we need to get that chairmanship position filled, however you all would like to. We are down to the Chair and two members of the Historic Preservation Commission. That is a quorum if all of them show up, but if all of them don't show up, we don't have a quorum on HPC. So we need to fill those two positions as quickly as possible. Those positions are not filled by district. The folks that go into those positions just simply have to be residents of the city of Millersville. But those two positions that you would be replacing for would be for Sandra Hall, who resigned based on going to work with the state, working on historic preservation, and Ms. Lynn Knapp, who retired, who resigned earlier in the year based on the letter sent to the Planning Office.
Can we get a copy of that chart?
Absolutely. Sure can. Mm-hmm, sure can.
And looking, this is my understanding, I'm not too sure, maybe she changed her mind, but Kimberly Simmons had told me that she was going to write a letter to resign and have you heard anything about that, Ms. Knapp?
Yeah, she was supposed to get back with me on the letter, but I haven't heard anything.
And we have not received any correspondence from her.
Do we need to follow up?
Yeah.
I can follow up with her just to make sure.
That's your district?
Yeah.
I'll reach out.
Because if, if she's gonna resign, it would be good for us to try to get all those positions filled at one time.
All right.
My last piece.
Mr. Griffin, it's not so that the Vice Chair just all roll over and finish out that tenure to be able to sit in that large position. Is it elected at large position or is just?
No, ma'am, it's, it's appointed by Mayor and Council.
Okay.
And there, there's no provision for the Vice Chair rolling over.
Okay, just wanted to know.
My last piece of information is, I think, good information. The sup, the state 2024 supplemental budget passed the General Assembly on Friday, Thursday, I believe it was, and in that is the information that I shared with you about $200 million in additional funding for LMIG in this year. We are really gonna be in an unprecedented time of being able to, to complete three different LMIG applications in the course of 12 months and that's certainly gonna help us with, with our roads. You all know that we have our roads already rated, they are ready to move forward. We did that as part of the TSPLOS referendum, which that money will start, collections for that will start April 1. But I'll be getting with Paul and Tim to make sure that we get an application in for that supplemental money as quickly after April 1st as we can. And then beginning July 1, we will be able to apply for FY '25 LMIG money. So you remember, we, we bank our LMIG money three years at a time, which the state allows you to do, so that we can get larger projects, to get a more active bidding process. And that is, in fact, what we will be doing with, and Paul, help me out here, I always get my, my years messed up, messed up, '22, '23, and '24, the next round, to do the paving. Is that correct?
That's what we did initially.
Right, that's right. And so I'm excited about that. I anticipate that the supplemental money will be allocated in the same way that the regular money is, based on your road miles and percent of population. We haven't heard a whole lot about that yet, but I think it's pretty, pretty cool that we're gonna have the opportunity to get three LMIG runs in about nine months and that's, that's pretty unusual, so.
Is that one of the emails that I sent you, Mr. Griffin, in reference to it?
No, ma'am, that was, that was a signature page we needed to include in the current email application and I emailed you that today, that that had been submitted.
That's all, that's all, I thank you.
And Ms. Chambers, that's all I have, unless someone has confidence for me.
I just wanna say that roundabout, that was pretty fast. I've been on counseling, nothing happened that fast. I'm very excited about that. Meanwhile, another road.
Okay. No one has any more questions, but the city manager will move along. We don't have any old business, so we're gonna move right into new business and I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance O. 2402-06.
An ordinance to amend the 2022-2023 annual operating budget of the city of Millersville.
Okay, this is the first reading on this ordinance, but it's also time-sensitive and in order to go ahead and close out the 2023 budget year, we need to go ahead and move this forward. So I will, the Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rule and adopt it tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Now let's clerk call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Okay, the rules are suspended. Do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Okay, the budget amendments are official. I'll ask clerk to read ordinance O. 2402-07 as a first read, the ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances to add a Public Arts section.
This is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Millersville by adding chapter 59 entitled Public Works Arts, I mean, sorry, Public Arts.
Okay, this is the first reading on this ordinance and it's scheduled to come back either the first or second meeting, depending upon time constraints and what needs to be done to change the ordinance. I'll ask clerk to read ordinance O. 2402-08 by caption.
An ordinance to amend the 2023-2024 annual operating budget to deactivate one detective position in the Police Department and create the position of Lieutenant IT Forensics in the Police Department.
Okay, this is the first reading on this ordinance and since we're on a roll with time sensitivity, I'm going to ask that we have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? If not, I'll ask clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Okay, the rules have been suspended. I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Ordinance is approved. I'll ask clerk to read resolution R. 2402-10 by caption.
A resolution authorizes an agreement with Turnip Seed Engineering Engineers to provide the engineering services for preparing a lead service line inventory.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt, please?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Resolution is approved. I'll ask clerk to read resolution R. 2402-11 by caption.
A resolution to authorize an agreement with Simonton Engineering LLC to provide the engineering services associated with the project management and construction inspections for stormwater drainage projects and to provide the engineering services associated with the project management and construction inspections for traffic improvements on Blandy Hills Road.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Motion is approved, I mean, the resolution is approved. Motion to. Okay, moving right along. Is everybody keeping up?
You're rolling.
All right, I'm rolling over here. I'll ask clerk to read resolution R. 2402-12 by caption.
A resolution to authorize and accept a proposal from Simonton Engineering LLC to provide the engineering services associated with conducting a traffic study for the intersection of North Jefferson Street and Dunlap Road.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye. Resolution is approved. We have four alcohol license applications for Sodexo, one each at the Centennial Center, the main dining room, Magnolia Ballroom, and the old Governor's Mansion. These are considered new applications and need to be approved separately. I will ask the clerk to present the first one.
Okay. This is for Samuel Fernandez on behalf, behalf of Sodexo and the first one is for Sodexo at Georgia College at Centennial Center, 251 South Clark Street. Just a moment. And it is for beer, wine, liquor, and catering consumption on premises. And it is for beer, wine, liquor, and catering consumption on premises.
Okay, let's get, okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
The only, the only discussion was, is not catering on that one, the one at Centennial Center.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, that was the application fee checked there.
So that's.
So it's not alcohol beverage and catering?
Uh, no, they're all application fees, so.
Some of them have catering.
Oh, they have some, yes, they have some. So that's right, that, that was application fee checked.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's less catering.
So no catering, that's right.
Okay, everybody good with that?
So this is for beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises.
Okay. Okay, having heard the application, we've got a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Application is approved. You'll read the second application, please.
Okay, this is also for Samuel Fernandez, and this one is for Dex, Sodexo at Georgia College, three hu, for at Magnolia, 300 West Hancock Street. Let me make my line here so I can see where that. So this is for beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises.
And catering.
No catering.
Yeah, that, no, that, 'cause it's application fee line. Magnolia does not have catering.
Oh, I.
They've got that checked.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So if they got it checked, then I, I can assume they were checking that application fee.
Well, the last one that we haven't got to yet hasn't checked, the one we have not gotten.
Yeah, the, the one for the main dining hall is the only one that requires catering.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Dining hall, right, dining hall, and the, um, the old governor's mansion doesn't have catering either.
Okay.
Assuming they've checked the proper line, this is, this is at Magnolia, and it is for beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises.
Okay, thank you.
I need a motion and a second.
You've heard the applications, there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Application is approved. Ask clerk to read the third application.
So this is also for Samuel Fernandez on behalf of Sodexo at Georgia College, and this is for 231 West Hancock Street, the main dining hall. And this is for beer, wine, liquor, and this has the alcoholic beverage catering license. Beer, wine, liquor, catering.
Okay. You've heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I do have one question. Why, why are these all new applications when this is, is it new management, or?
No, they do not meet the inspection requirements before the end of the calendar year.
Okay, maybe I shouldn't have brought that up.
I think it is also new management. I think, I think it is new management as well.
Okay, but everything's good now? Okay.
Yes.
Right, okay. Okay, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
It took a long time to get to this point.
Yeah, okay. I knew we were in February, we're normally doing this in about October, November.
And a lot of people.
Okay, ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Application is approved. I'll ask the clerk to please read the fourth and final application.
This is also on, for Samuel Fernandez on behalf of Sodexo at Georgia College, 120 South Clark Street at the old governor's mansion, and this is for beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises.
Okay, you've heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay, the license, all the licensing is approved. Okay, we have five appointments tonight, and all are reappointments, and it's for the Millersville Main Street Downtown Development Authority. On behalf of Mayor Copeland, I nominate Justin Jones, Adam Hagie, Missy Swiker, Willie Davis, and Jim Fane for reappointment to the Millersville Main Street Downtown Development Authority. And if there is no objection, I will ask for them to be appointed en masse. Hearing no objection, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All appointments are confirmed. I'll take just a moment to pat each one of them on the back. Those five people do a yeoman's job. They, that, that board works really hard, and you can see it in the way that this, this city has changed over the years, and I think we all certainly agree for the better.
Here, here.
Yes.
Okay, is there a need for a closed session tonight?
I do not have anything.
Everybody shaking their head no? So that concludes our agenda.
But, but, but I have one announcement.
Yes, ma'am, you go right ahead.
There's gonna be a yard sale on March the 4th and the 5th, right next door, from 8:00 to 4:30, Relay for Life, the city. You all, please come and shop.
What's the date again?
Fourth and the 5th, March.
Yep, which I think is Monday and, is it Monday and Tuesday?
Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah.
Can I add something to that?
Sure, please.
If you have some, some things, items that you know would, would resell at a valuable price.
Valuable, not just those items.
This is, this is raising money for the Relay of Life, which the city does, and we've done it for, oh, boy, yeah, twenty, thirty years.
For valuable price.
It's, uh, they, they really go after it, and, and this is a, a new situation, I think, having this yard sale, having a little something different, and hopefully.
Used to do a fish fry.
People will come by and shop.
Okay.
Mr. Jordan, I mean, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you double back round and amend the agenda for the question that I asked? Did you, I'll go ahead and name the mayor pro temp.
Yes, ma'am, we will do that. I'm just about to forget it. Thank you so much. Okay, I need a motion to amend the agenda to, um, select a mayor pro temp.
Need a motion.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to amend the agenda carries. I'll ask if there is a motion to, um, select a new mayor pro temp.
Ms. Map was making a motion when we started.
I nominate Ms. Shinholster.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm at the second, y'all. It's about a second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Shinholster? Okay, you good? Okay. Okay. No discussion, I'll ask clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Can I add something?
You most certainly, no.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, and we have a new mayor pro temp that will be starting in March. And I'll hand this gavel to you, and you can.
We'll, we'll get those twenty second cars ready for you.
Thank you all for doing that. You know, what I really wanted to see is, we gotta get back on point. Our charter said we're supposed to do this in January, and we're coming up on the election season, none of us could come back in, so let's leave it better than where we've been. We just wanna make sure we're doing things on point, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chambers, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for reminding me. I was zipping along at such a pace that I forgot, so.